Oh, I was there three times today.
Well, this was that when you saw me go past.
Probably a representation of the license plate, something with the license plate.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Wait, I'm not very, I'm sorry, put our chair under your side, but this is a process. I have to go.
Or go to steps to get everybody in.
I don't want to be too hard on you.
She's excited. She's excited to get started.
Let me just make sure everything's good. Time for a reuniting, I think it is. Okay, thank you. Would you join me in the place of words to start entering? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, welcome to the city council meeting, J. Redd Second, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, we appreciate you coming. Can you do this? Call the board, and we have four. Uh, Councilor Bedingfield.
Here.
Pastor Beasley.
Here.
Councilor, uh, King.
Here.
Councilor Redd.
Here.
Mayor Short.
Here.
Pastor Zoll.
Here.
And, um.
Here.
Yep. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, if you're looking at our agenda, are there any changes and additions to our agenda tonight? Okay, I don't hear many. Okay. And so we're, the number D on your agenda, actions taken as a result of discussions during the January exec- executive meeting. So the first, um, thing that we're looking at is a decision of senior public land purchases. And so do you, I have a motion on this. Yes.
To make a motion, uh, move to direct the city reporter to withdraw the land and water conservation fund grant.
And do I have others here a second now?
All second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're looking.
I did say aye.
Okay, thank you.
I did.
Okay. And we're looking at the approval of engagement letters for legal services by Davis White Tremaine LLC. Do I have a motion on that?
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion, yes, to have a proposal of, uh, the term.
You're right. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. So we're down to the consent, uh, agenda accounts payable. And I have reviewed, uh, the accounts payable and find it in order. Do I have a motion to, um, first of all, does everybody have a chance to read it? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the council agenda, consent agenda? A motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all righty. Motion carries. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And we have, I guess, presentation from Lincoln County Sheriff's Office to report for October, November.
Um, December.
Yes.
I think it was just December.
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay.
I have a big one.
Oh, the one page today?
Yeah.
Just in case you have any questions.
He's just, he's just here for you guys if you have any questions. If you have any con- concerns, comment, if he has anything special he wants to add.
So I have a question for you. Um, I know that we have you twenty-four seven here, and do you, are you in?
Twenty-four seven, I'd be able to. But, yes.
Just curious, what if your percentage of time is here? It's always so happy to see you, that we saw you today, and that was wonderful.
So, I am the contractor, it'd be like, this is my area, I should be here the majority of the shifts that I work. Sunday through Wednesday, seven AM to five PM. Uh, now there's adding stuff I have to do in Newport, everyone's on the north a little bit. I have just gotten my office here, so, um, with monitors, and that will help me stay here to write reports and stuff like that. For the month of December, it tells us that a lot shorter than they normally are.
Right.
And that's because I'm a field training officer, and I had, so I trained other deputies, and I had a deputy in checkout. So he was running the show. I was just basically kind of dressed like this, but I don't know if you saw me. So for the last month, I was in and out. Um, and that's why maybe I didn't see you as much. Recently, a sick day, vacation day.
It's Christmas.
It's Christmas, uh, but the deputy is, I don't check out, he's a solo deputy on his own, and his own Cornell, um, and I am back here.
We appreciate everything you do. On the list, I think, do you have anything else standing that, um, happened?
Um, nothing much to really talk about from this list. Um, I know there was, it's on this list, but my part of the burglaries, very deep burglary down there, that goes to coffee company.
Oh.
Um, there looked like it was a couple, maybe male, female, who had been hitting business up in Dillon County. Um, and I think Lincoln City is making headway on it, um, asking people interest. So we'll continue to work with them, see what we can do, and hopefully come up with more.
Question?
Yes.
Deputy, uh, we had a report. I think it's in the, uh, administrator's report, or the public superintendent's report, about vandalism. Which is, seems to be recurrent down in our harbor, where the doors were kicked in to the fish cleaning station in the bathrooms. Who does stuff like that, and how, how are we gonna prevent that? What can we do, like with cameras, signage, what?
So I do recall this being a discussion months ago. I didn't know, I haven't heard anything about it being a recurrent thing. Um, must've been reported to somebody else.
I just read about this in the packet today.
Our team is, just saying, he can be more.
There's been four.
No, there hasn't recently, and I haven't, I mean, for months now.
So the last year we've had four, oh, last summer, and.
Right, yeah, I know, it was, it was my attention.
Yeah.
We've had recently, how many, just recent, just ones recently?
One, yeah, there was three in the summer.
Was it the last one reported to law enforcement?
Yeah, at least so.
I didn't, I can look into it.
We were, we were looking at the cameras, we just don't, what we see is an individual, we don't see the damage because it's from the, uh, opposite side of the building from the pump station side, really can't, so.
Like, where can we point cameras?
Maybe we can configure your meeting, we can meet outside.
Yeah, I mean, legally, as long as I think they're not like.
In the bathroom.
In the, kind of, right, and make sure it starts with building, back me up on that, and, it wasn't all like insults.
That's been a debate about whether, what we can actually, where we can play camera to, to take a look at that. And everyone's like, we can't point to bathroom, or you can't point to the door.
I, I don't know.
But it seems we should be able to have a camera toward, really doesn't look in, but it looks.
It's in the direction of the, I would think, I mean, yeah. Um, but yeah, kicking the doors are being, walking in.
Hardest are electronic locks. They don't know how to read on how to get out, or how to get in, if we lock the doors. What time do they lock at night?
At ten.
So, like, at ten, if somebody wants to use it.
That's still vandalizing, I mean.
They're kicking the door, because they want to use it.
It's not okay, so, well, they're not going to get the bathroom, they're not going to be kicking doors to, to figure out the balcony.
The ones where they're kicking out because.
They're stuck.
Yes. And. They put, they put big signs up saying, do this to get out.
There's a magnetic release button, and it says.
Push this.
Right. We need maybe a bigger slogan or something.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thank you as well. Are you glad you're with us? Can I ask just a question?
Sure.
Questions? Oh, sorry. Okay, okay. So, um, it's totally cool that you're training the new people, that's awesome. Now, when you do, because usually you give us like a whole catalog, pages.
Right.
So when you train, are you physically here in town, or is that?
So there's the training process, we have, I think, five total phases. One through four is where we're training, and then the last phase is called checkout.
Okay.
That's where the person who's in checkout takes the reins, I'm just sitting there basically observing. And that's what I was doing for the month of December, was observing. Now, the other phases.
But are you here when you're doing?
We are, we're still, we're still here, but we are, so we're waiting for calls in other parts of the county. A little bit, yeah. Um, for the one through four phases, yes, we remain here. Five, we're in checkout, we're still in charge of people today, but we might be taking calls in other parts of the county, because we need certain types of calls to say, you're good with what you're doing, we're ready to catch you out, and be by yourself.
Any other comments? Much peace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It was like Christmas, we went downtown to do flashing, blue, and red lights, it's all for fun.
Okay, um, let's see, now moving to. Last second. Community group reports and commission group reports, emergency medicine. Karen and Draca, this is in your packet, had given this to me, and I made comments, said it, this is what you keep in your car. Council Beasley, um, who may have mentioned that initially, uh, we used to have things in our car, I appreciate that.
Oh, is that a result of my comment? Well, isn't that one?
I know, that's amazing.
That, I don't, all you.
Yeah, and Karen just happened to have this, and so, this, we need to look at this, and, and do use. And as far as the, um, emergency preparedness, we met on the eighteenth. And I met with Gina, that was Monday, um, I'm sorry, our, I'm sorry, last meeting was December eighteenth. And then Gina is the administrator that's also, um, going to be helping us with our committee, but emergency preparedness committee, uh, on occasion. So after the meeting, I met with her two days later, to sort of like push through, help her, push through some of the ideas that we've had. This all be meeting with her for just briefly, um, every Wednesday after Monday meeting, just to make sure that we're getting things done and it doesn't fall between the cracks. That was really good. And our next meeting is January eighth. And I've asked Brady to teach us how to use the radios more efficiently.
Yeah.
Um, I know that Deb and Karen live in two different parts of the city, they've been practicing with each other. So we could like go into the ladies' training call or something, you know, I think that would be fine. And there's also, um, a couple of, um, committee member, uh, city council members that don't have a radio, so if you still want one, please kind of get one, and we'll make sure that you get to train for that.
Yeah, just get ahold of me, I, I've got the radios.
I would like to make a comment on the radios, though. Um, we, there seems to be some confusion about the purpose of those radios. One of the, your committee members emailed, um, Brady about them needing to be charged, but the thing is, is those radios, we're going to explain, is that the emergency preparedness committee, meaning, those radios are not designed to be on twenty-four seven. They are only designed to be on when you need them, they're not gonna, they're not like, you know, an announcement where you can track when there's a storm, and they're not going to report. That's a different kind of radio. These radios are simply designed to use storm and event.
Good.
So, um, I think we need to clarify that because of the emails that.
Are, are you saying that these radios only have, come with a charging station?
They do, but I see some of the concerns is whether, what was it, I don't remember, was that what she said?
You're supposed to have them off a charger, they feel, some of the people feel that the radios need to be on twenty-four seven.
Okay.
And that they can be overcharged because of the directions, say, don't leave it on a charger all the time. And that if you don't, you have to sit for twelve hours, and it's a lot of work. Well, really, they should be charged, turned off, and then during an event, you turn it on, and you, or you exercise the radio while you're practicing. But there is other radios that are available that are, uh, uh, emergency response radio that will notify if there's a, a storm, or a tsunami, or tsunami warning, um, any kind of event, fire, wildfires, things like that. There's also Emma Bridge, but these other radios are set up to go off during a tsunami or any, anything like that, any, any emergency. That, that just sits and plucks in, and the alarm goes off.
Well, that's good, because.
These radios don't do that. These radios are just for like a walkie-talkie, for communicator.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And when's the next radio training?
Um, next, uh, on January the eighth, it's the ninety, at four thirty, yeah. And also, uh, I was able to talk to Samantha Buckley, the new emergency manager for, um, for Lincoln County. And I know that Kim has talked to her, and she, she will be at that meeting on the eighth. Um, she just wants to come and introduce herself. And I talked to her about having another Cascade Rising event that was so popular last, last January, and she would be happy to look into that. So it was, it was a, it was a good meeting. That's all I have. Lindsay, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. So then we have, um, excuse me. Uh, anything, anybody from the Homeless Commission here?
Uh, nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. And how about Harbor?
Uh, we're darkened in, uh, December, so nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Penny?
And you have the report that was in your handbook. I don't know if, I don't see, oh, uh, Commissioner White's on, I know she would be there to answer any questions, if you have anything you need to ask about.
Okay. Okay. Um, parks?
Parks, nothing but parks for.
Yeah, nothing to report. Uh, we've worked on a room for that proposal for the Parks and Recreation Committee today, I just didn't get it done, finished. The Parks Commission has reviewed it, and they like the direction, and they're very excited about the direction. So on sixteen, uh, they will come and present what they would like to do, so.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, same with enhancement?
The eggs were delivered, uh, just before Christmas, and according to Beanie, we've had a very light death count.
Okay.
I wish he was here.
Okay. Could we, um, jump back to parks real quick?
Sure.
Y'all have been, um.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, we would, we really should have people come to that, because of my, I know we're shouting from a really shitty doing that, so, you want to?
I just have a quick question on the, if, on the status of inventory.
Oh, that, we haven't even, I can't even say, yeah, we haven't even done that.
Oh, okay.
That was planning on starting this month, because of the holidays.
Okay, cool. I was just curious if we.
Thank you.
Now, can, can you, uh, expand on that?
Okay.
Inventory, I will let Ken explain that.
That was the, coming out of the recreational community issue, where we discussed, and the council agreed that this would be something good for the Parks Commission to undertake, which is to visit all of our trails and blains, and, and kind of do an inventory, and see if there's things that need to be addressed, if there's some hazardous situations, endangered trails and things like that.
Access liable, I believe.
Access, you know, just to, just to, so we are understanding, and we can, we can address things that need to be addressed. You know, like, you know, we have some that, that, that stairs and Indian trail.
Yeah, and the stairs out on North Point that were put in by, uh, unbeknownst to the city.
Yeah. So these may, if they're on our area, that makes us liable, and if they're improved and they lead to the water, that makes us further liable, you know, to be one fall into that. So the idea was to go through and have this cards issued, and there's a whole checklist that C I S gave us that.
So is there anything on that checklist about fencing? Because I've noticed that, uh, like the state has fences at this, uh, oceanfront locations, like at government point. But at our oceanfront parks, we don't have any fencing.
We would be able to put fences up if that's the direction on the ones that are property, but there's some of that are property that leads up into the county or the state, and we would have to have them to kind of rate fencing, you know, that they require us to prevent that. It's all about access to the water. And stopping people from having access to the water or.
But you could just walk in, you know, walk to it from our, uh, property, right? I mean, we don't have any fences on the, on the, uh, oceanfront park.
As far as that, other than, aren't any fences.
Yeah, you would actually go from city property to state land, or.
Your property.
And then, and, but there is some danger beyond this point, signage in some of our parks along the front, but, uh, and the state does have a warning beyond this point.
The only reason I brought that up was just in relation to the insurance company. I'm not sure what they're requiring of us and not requiring. But I just got a feeling that they're going to be tightening their screws on all of this.
Their recommendation right now is to close improved trail access to the beaches, to the water. Um, and I talked to very conflicting information between C I S and, and our insurance agent. And now I'm a hundred percent know, but what they're saying is it's the access to the water. So like, for example, the Bob Jackson Park, we go down the steep steps, because they go down the steep steps one-on-one, and they go to a park. And then the beach, that, that access is not wrong. That would be, that would still fall under recreational immunity.
Did you say Bob Jackson Park?
My, so, it's just for the staff.
Well, it's a, it, there's a Bob Jackson Memorial bench there, so.
Yeah, that's what they call it, I'm just going by the common name.
Because it's a rising old, yeah.
And then, with the North Point Trails, all of them up there, the access, that is a concern, because that is a trail that leads directly to the water. So a part of that is whether or not that's our issue exactly, or is it the county that has some of that, so. But they're saying they would recommend the close, but some of that's not improved either, so it would only be the improved parts. But that was their last direction, um, like I wrote in my project updates, some of the cities are closing, some are not, some are just waiting, because they feel like it's going to be resolved in February, because the legislature's, or just, you know. You know, looking at the ones that are really bad and deciding if they need to close. That Indian one, that Indian trail, that one I'm worried about. That is slicked, right?
Yeah, it's a steeper.
Yeah, it's a steeper, uh, uh, steeper scent, and, um, and the steps need work.
Thank you very much.
But luckily, I was worried about the bridge, the pedestrian bridge that was over water, has no access to the water, that's, it's really weird how they're figuring this out, but it's also subjections, speculations. We would have to go to court to find out exactly what they want.
Seems like a pattern. Okay, um, do we have any public comments this evening? Do we have anyone, um, soon more on the telephone? If you don't like to give a public comment.
Nobody has, um, raised their hand or, kind of, muted.
Mr. King, would you like to come forward?
Uh, I just want to ask Brady one question.
Okay, can you come forward, please? I'm sorry, Mr. King, you do have to come forward. And, um, Council Rec has mentioned that some people, she's still having a hard time hearing, so either talk a little louder, or make sure your mic is close to you. The reason that I'm nagging about this is because they're having a hard time hearing, but that needs our video quality, so we're going to get this addressed this year, but right now.
Mr. King, would you sit down, please?
Please have a seat, Mr. King.
I like the shirt. Thank you, it's too many. Uh, we had twenty-two point zero four inches in December of Redd.
Yes.
Is that a record? It is close to ninety-five. It, it actually was almost exact what we had in ninety-five on Thanksgiving. And, uh, it, but it, it, I think ninety-five beat it, it, it was like twenty-four point seven or something like that, and, yeah. But we were very close. And that rec, that did match, but we did bypass, um, but not as significant as some other areas, so we did hold our own, but they, uh, they, the Q realized that that was so much rain that it's hard to keep, you know, groundwater out of, uh, manhole lits when it comes down that, that heavy. Well, we did hit six point four inches on the fifth, and I. Yeah, that, yeah, that, maybe the one twenty-four hour, I didn't check, but I, I, I did see the, uh, the, the monthly, uh, December rainfall was close to what we had in ninety-five. That I did, and I got that on my computer, I could, could have gave you a copy of that. Okay. Fifty-eight, those were the things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Usman, did you have anything you would like to say? I saw you unmute.
I did, yeah. Thanks, thanks for seeing my hand. Um, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Christian Zapanchich, six one five Broadway Street, Suite two one six, Seaside, Oregon. And I'm here on behalf of C A White. I saw in the agenda packet tonight that there was unfinished business, proposed property purchase for C A White. Um, I just had a, um, one of my first questions on that was if the, if there was going to be, um, a resolution before the board, or before the city council tonight, and, um, if there was ever a staff report prepared. The, uh, the attorney had mentioned that that might be a possibility, that there was a staff report out there, and I was curious to see that, if that ever came about.
There was a staff report provided, and it's, um, in the council packet, uh, page thirteen, if you look at, I put it in there.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and whether, and there'll be a, a resolution before the, uh?
We're, uh, I'm asking for the council to make a record, to, um, motion, to make a decision on the proposal by, uh, Mr. White. I'll ask him at the last meeting.
Perfect, and, and Mr. White and I are here, of course, to answer questions in connection with that resolution, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to that, does everyone have a chance to read, um, the document from Kim regarding the property?
Yes.
Okay, right. So if you've read it, do I hear a motion at this time? As to what to do?
I have a motion, uh, move to begin the process of purchasing the property at the west side of North Ego Bay Creek, tax lot oh three hundred, as proposed in the property's owner's offer.
Hey, do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I actually have a question on that.
Sure.
Could we not use urban renewal funds to purchase this? What, where is the funds coming from that we are proposing to purchase the property?
Oh, we have the land, acquisition of land property. We have acquisition of land, plus we also have it in, um, we have it in the general fund in Lakeview. I saw it, I, I'm, I'm, but we would be using the land.
Okay. Could it come? I just wanted to remind you, yes, in urban renewal, it's in the urban renewal area.
It can come out of urban.
It could come out of urban renewal funds, so.
Then the council could make that decision, uh, but you would have to actually go and have an urban renewal agency meeting to do that, because you would need to take action that way. But you could take action as the council began the process, and then if your direction would be then to bring it before the urban renewal, to see about taking it out of there, that would be nice.
Thank you. That's what we need.
Thank you, uh, and I apologize if these are the done-in questions, but we may have already discussed these, but I've forgotten what the answers were, were. Uh, but why are we not just getting an easement on this property to purchase? I mean, we've been using this forever, and it's been, you know, uh, why not an easement?
That is certainly something we can explore, but with this offer, we could own the property outright, and we wouldn't have to worry about easements access, plus it would also protect the property owner, then he wouldn't have to worry about this access, and it just gives us clean type of that.
Uh, I have actually, uh, three, uh, four questions, that's number one, uh, but do we have an appraisal on this?
Yeah.
Uh, what about, have, have we looked at the other property that's down there? I've been told, you know, from the map that I saw, there was another property. It looks unbuildable. Uh, is there a possibility of getting contiguous properties down there all at once?
I'm not sure that I'm aware of that.
There's somebody else on some property down there by the entrance somewhere to.
Well, we own the property down by the entrance.
Isn't there some other property down there?
No.
There's a property that is, um, east of the pond, that is owned by, um, from, a couple. I've met them, they came down.
And would the acquisition of that property, uh, make?
It's not, but it's, it's located right on the pond, it's just worth above the pond right there.
Okay. Uh, you know, I, I have to tell you, uh, I've done a lot of thinking about buying property here lately uh, because of this discussion on this park, this oceanfront park. And weighing it in my mind, and one of the things that I, in, in, in light of other developments that I think of, is if we are to buy property, any property at all, uh, it might, it could. is if we are to buy property, any property at all, uh, it might, the, the only reason I can justify that is if we were banking that property and it became an asset to us. In the event that we would have to sell that asset and get a fair market value for it in order to meet obligations. So I look at, uh, you know, uh, you know, we have assets in the city. And so I would have to look at it like this, and that doesn't seem like a piece of property we could turn around and sell for eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, we don't have an appraisal on it, we don't really know what it's worth. I mean, and I know that we don't wanna go out and get a fifteen thousand dollar appraisal on an, on an eighteen thousand dollar property, but it seems to me that we could call up a friendly realtor.
We've done that, actually.
Um, Mister White, would you like to come up and explain that?
Yeah, yeah, so we did, we had a broker put it on a praise. They give a, a, an opinion of value of a hundred and six thousand dollars for two thirds of an acre.
And we could turn around and sell it, but why couldn't we? That's our access to our water.
Right, you guys have, you guys, that's the only piece that you don't own all the way to the reservoir. Yeah, it has a eight inch water main, that's the main artery for supplying the state water.
Nobody could build on it, nobody could do anything on it, because it is our access to our water. We wouldn't wanna turn around and sell anything.
So then that begs the question, why not an easement?
That, because then you'd have to have access for myself too, and if I wanted to develop or do something back there. You know, it really just needs to be the city's property. And we were looking at trying to give this to you guys, actually. And that doesn't work, I guess, and there's some laws against that, so. Basically, the value is the value of building permit, because we're gonna build on the opposite side of the property. So that, that's really the exchange, is just for cost of the length of the cost.
Okay.
Really, it was a gift, is what we're kinda doing.
All right, sorry, sorry, guys, I can help answer those questions a little bit too. Um, the, your, your question about it being why not an easement? It's, it's exactly as Mister White explained, um, there's some liability issues involved in it being an easement, because it's not city land, and it's the sharing aspect of it that creates that liability and insurance issues that probably isn't really worth it for the city. And to clarify as well is, it's not necessarily a purchase of a piece of land, because what we aim to do here is adjust the boundaries between the city's land and Mister White's land. So it would in effect be a property line adjustment that collapses the boundary on Mister White's land and then creates contiguous parcels with the city. So the, the real value there is, it's offered for a very cheap price and it creates contiguous lots for the cities, which in itself has a lot of value.
So I have a question for Ray.
Yeah.
Um, is that, would the ready place on that land for the cash emergency?
Oh, possible, yeah.
We would wanna consider though, this is our watershed.
But it's, yeah.
We do not want the general public up in our waters.
It is, but it.
We really need to work to protect that.
Yeah, but it's a longer creek too, so that would be a flooded area. There is a, it depends on what kind of a ban, but if there's a tsunami or something, that'd definitely be impacted by it.
Okay.
Uh, Council Rec also has a hand.
Yes, Council Rec. Council Rec.
Yeah, thank you. Um, had last, asked last time, um, and I don't know if there's any clarification, if the ownership of the city could go to the center line of the creek? Was that resolved?
It's not been resolved yet, Fran, but that's, we're gonna discuss that once this agreed upon and they start to draft up an agreement, yeah.
Thank you very much.
There's, right, there's, there's still the negotiation, so ultimately, you know, we're making another decision on the actual purchase right now, we're, we're beginning the process of, 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 right?
Well, what is the motion that's going to emerge out of this?
The one that Council Ben, okay.
It's, uh, to begin the process of purchasing property.
Okay, thank you.
Who's on the staff report?
Thank you, that's right.
Who's gonna survey it and who's paying for the survey?
Well, it's a lot line adjustment. Um, Christian, we can talk about the survey, is that a survey required for that? Just the, the, uh, opportunities are already there.
Was it? It was, yeah.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be required with any, um, lot line adjustment. You're usually gonna have to get a survey as part of the land use process. So I imagine that your planners are gonna want that survey and kind of the before and the after condition. So as far as survey costs, I don't know if we included that on the original sheet, but the, um, you know, usually, uh, or I believe that we proposed that the city would employ their own survey to create that, that lot line adjustment, um, and that it will be a joint lot line adjustment application between Mister White and the city.
We would have our city engineer from that. My turn is down.
I just have a comment, have a comment about that. Uh, Sam and enhancement, and Vinnie was here, he was very much in favor of purchasing this land, which is really important, we should listen to that, and it's a really good deal financially. I think it would be really solid to pass it up.
The city should own it.
Yeah.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, thank you, all righty. So we have a.
We need a vote.
We need a vote.
Yes, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. So I was gonna say we have a motion and a second, and we've got a discussion. So all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay. So we're looking at new business, um, the big tire park lot of what, um, vegetation, resolution five five four dash twenty-four. And so that's on page fifteen. Have you had a chance to read that? Did you have any questions about that?
And it looks like.
I'd like to address that.
Okay.
Does, I don't see my staff report.
No.
I just have a variation in the, in the.
Can you send it in a second, do you know?
Yeah, this packet here that had the lease report on it.
That was my project update.
Oh.
I can go get it, I, or I can print it.
I understand the color, the colored form, maybe the colored ones or the yellow.
No, it should be right before page fifteen, uh, fourth thirteen. It should be page thirteen.
This, yeah, it's actually page thirteen, this is, and fourteen is the amount.
Okay, okay, so you do have it, Kim?
That's for the last, that's for the last thing that we talked about.
Yeah, that's for Stanley, that's not for this one, that's why I'm continuing. I'm so sorry, I just don't know how I didn't get to you. No.
I'd like, I'd like to address this if you have time.
Okay, go ahead, Fran.
Uh, thank you very much. So, um, this is quite a shocker that we had this with, um, no, no pre, prelude. Um, there are really many other options than vacating a piece of property because we're scared of liability. And, um, and vacating a, a piece of property with an incredible view, um, I mean, exceptional view of a sea cave, um, is really, um, a weighty issue. And, um, I spoke to a landscape architecture, um, a friend of mine who was just walking by with me, and, um, it, the city had just taken out the bench, you know, had caution tape up. And he said, oh, well, there's an easy solution here. And so this is not the only one, but what I'm saying is, here's one solution that just makes us, should make us take pause not to vacate a piece of property so quickly out of concern. Um, he says, why don't you put a raised platform with, and plant salal all around? And you just have, you control people with this lit raised platform? Just, I don't know if you've all been down to Rocky Creek and overlooked, um, the incredible view of Whale Cove. Do something like that, where you control public, the public to a certain point. And, you know, you don't have people wandering around where it's dangerous, but you don't give up access to an incredible view, um, in depot bay. So, um, I would really ask for way more thought before we go about vacating a, a piece of beautiful parkland. Um, so that's all I wanna say, but, um, if we were gonna do this, this would require, in my mind, a work session, a good discussion, not a very quick vote with no thought, really. Thank you.
But they, so I'm, I apologize, I do not know how the staff report did make it there. So the reason that we, this is the, we've talked about the concerns of the area. This is a first recommendation, it's not meant for you guys to immediately jump on it and make a decision. It's for discussion, we could table it, we could do anything you want. But the idea is that this was what our city engineer recommended as the best option, because we do not know how fast that flip side is moving. And it's moved quite a bit since that bed was put in. So he said, yes, we can look at doing landscaping. He asked about, we know, said, do we consider fencing? So it's really gonna be about what the city would want to do. Do you, if you wanna preserve it, you would want to find out what the recommendations and find out how much that land is approaching, because it is. So anything you put in there, a concrete platform ready to go in that, we could lose it. I don't know how fast, but that would be something that if you guys wanna do that, we're willing to do it. This, this was what his recommendation was as the best approach, because of the liability.
Okay, that's a decent.
Thank you, uh, and, and thanks for letting me weigh in on this a little bit. Uh, this, uh, big tire park, and let me say, let me preface by saying that, uh, I am not, I'm, I'm very pro park. Uh, and I wanna see our parks, uh, upgraded and improved. I would love to acquire parks, but we have to be very, uh, uh, practical about, uh, these parks. And I would define this less as a park and more as an attractive nuisance. Uh, this is not much of a park. It doesn't have much of a view, I would argue that. It's got a straight down view that will put your heart in your throat. Uh, it is very dangerous as it sits. If, if we did nothing else, we would have to put a fence up there just to prevent somebody from walking down there who's looking at their cellphone. And that happens all the time. Uh, it is, it's a deadly spot. And, uh, it, there's no room to the left or the right to really do anything. I say let's, I, I, when I saw that, uh, it had been recommended that we get rid of this, I thought, who is on the city staff that is really thinking about our city here? And, 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 uh, how we can direct what, these meager resources that we have to doing about it? And I think that's one way we can do it, instead of pouring more money into this attractive nuisance, we just get rid of it, give it to the neighbors. I don't know what, that's one of my questions, is what happens with it once we vacate it to us? Pardon me?
It goes, it goes to the neighbors.
Okay, yes.
So this guy was, they, that one gets the blue and that one gets the green.
Oh, whatever, great.
On the vacation, they did, divided down the middle, happened out, and then the other.
Excellent, very good. I recommend that it's an insurance. Can't turn it over to them.
Okay, and one of the things I didn't, because you didn't have a staff report, you didn't know that. One of the things, people who owned the bench came in to, um, they never got my original email. And I told them, and I said, well, this is what we recommended, and they said, works for us, it means we get that back. So they were happy about it, and, but the only thing they would have wanted to ask was if they could put the bench somewhere else. Because they did take the benches, so. And I said, well, you would have to come to the proposal through council with where you want the bench to go. And I said, I would give them a couple of choices instead of saying, oh, I'm gonna go here, so. Um, nothing's been, I made no promises, nothing has been settled. It was just, I'm sorry, you didn't have a staff report, I wanted to explain this to you. Um, it was just, this is what our city engineer recommended, after we brought it down, had a look at it. Council can directly do anything you want.
So I would think that, um, since we don't have the staff report, we just have not only permission, that we need to make the decision that we mentioned, if I'm correct.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There isn't one yet. You said your recommendation, but there's not an official motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution number five five four dash two four to vacate, uh, big tire park.
One second, Kim.
Pretty well debated.
So I'm gonna be voting against, there's no reason for us to immediately vacate a very scenic property. We should definitely look at making it safer, I'm not against that at all, but vacating public property is a bad behavior. And I definitely disagree and will be voting against the motion.
I also disagree, and I think Frank has a good idea about having a workshop. Maybe we can all take a field trip down there and go look at it. And bring some ideas to make it safer, but I'm absolutely against vacating it.
I do think that one of the important things to do is to have that looked at to see how fast it's approaching. I don't think you can make a decision or should make a decision if you don't know how fast that is, the ocean is coming out of that parket, because anything you put in there is at risk of dumping in the water, so. So that would just be my recommendation, that if you do that, that's totally fine, just let's get somebody out there to. I don't know who goes out there and looks at that stuff, so, is it geotechnical? I don't know, but somebody.
So we have a motion in the second, no matter.
Further discussion, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'd just like to say one more thing, that, um, um, under goals, I think it's seventeen, um, shore, coastal shoreline school, you, you cannot vacate property that, um, provides access to and along the Oregon shore without providing equal access somewhere else. So with this, any vacation, the reason that is part of our land use planning goals is because public access to and along, which means, um, is visual, uh, physical or visual access is such an important state resource that's then carried through to local comprehensive plans and to our own city's plans, that it requires replacement if you lose something like this. So, um, this is really a weighty decision, and actually, I'd really like, with, without, you know, um, saying there's any ill intent, um, at all, because I know there's concerns about safety, but the whole process by which an engineer, um, acting, um, without direction of the city council in the first place, and then the planner preparing a whole, um, planning, uh, packet, or, uh, you know, information, without first going it by the city where we could have had this discussion, is sort of, um, you know, backwards in my mind and shouldn't have happened, because this is, you know, you know me and you know other people that have really strong views about the value of public resources. And, um, so I, I just really wanna say that I don't think this process or this proposal should ever have come to us waiting for a resolution and somebody making a motion for a resolution with, without it first have gotten affirmed by the city that this was the direction we wanted to head. Uh, thank you very much.
Yes, Mister Mason?
Uh, I wanna compliment Council Rec on recognizing that this is a discussion about city resources. It really, truly, truly is. And we have limited resources here. And what you described is a situation where apparently we're gonna have to have some engineering done, we're gonna have to have some construction done, in order to create some kind of viewpoint here. And, uh, uh, I just don't, I, I mean, we have to debate our ability to provide the resources when we have already so many parks, properties that are in need of repair. And, uh, in fact, our, our current packet cites some of this stuff. From, you know, very expensive repairs. So it is, it is an issue of resources, and that's why we should, when we vote on this, you should be thinking about it, Council. Because what is this gonna cost? Where's the money gonna come from? All of these things, especially given our situation.
And then, okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, so can we come over? What we, are you gonna help our vote? I mean.
Well, we can do a vote, I would look at the end of the present. It's up to you.
Okay, we're gonna.
Do a vote, oh, I can do it. Um, sure, okay, so, Council Ben.
Thank you.
No, sorry. Wait a second, we'll get back here. Uh, I wish I would have put you before Beasley, Council Beasley.
Yes.
Council King, yes. Council Rec?
No.
Um, Mayor Short?
Uh, yes.
Um, I know I'm forgetting some, uh, Council Tom?
Yes.
And Council Beasley? I'm Watson. I'm Watson. I am so sorry, I missed you, Council Watson.
No.
Okay. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so right now it's four yes and three no. So the motion. So the motion passed.
Okay. So we're going to number two, small cities, allotment, on page sixteen.
Excuse me, can I, um, ask something? The resolution is to vacate, but vacation of such access violates our, our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. Unless there's replacement access provided. So we cannot make an illegal motion.
If you wish, just to make sure about this, um, we can double check this and bring it back again and say, we just heard this.
Yeah, I'm kind of the swing vote on this. I would feel much more comfortable knowing the answer to that question.
Okay, can you do that?
Yeah, so can we just withdraw the whole of the motion?
Well, that would be up to Counselor Beasley if he wanted to withdraw the motion.
Can you just let's get more information on? If that's true, we're making a motion for something that is illegal, so.
I doubt we're making a motion on anything illegal, but if, uh, I'm certainly not opposed to that. If, uh, if Counselor Rec wants to bring in line and verse of, of this, we can look at it. When she said, uh, it, uh, has to be replacement of equal value, uh, my first thought was, well, we have, uh, equal, plenty of equal opportunities to see ocean front. I don't read that as we have to go out and replace it with something. I mean, that would be.
That's what, that is what goal seventeen requires. You can look it up in our own comprehensive plan. Somebody could do that right now if they want and read the language.
Well, I would, you know, uh, do I need to withdraw this?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on a withdrawal? Is that a motion?
No, you can just simply withdraw.
And then I can withdraw my second.
Yeah.
And then what?
Oh, we haven't voted on, we voted on.
You should vote on it, you, the motion passed to, to, to look at that, but we can certainly, the council can certainly say, you know, Counselor Beasley can say, you know what, we'll just, let's go back and get more information about this and verify it.
Okay, we voted on this, we, you know, that's where it is. I think it's incumbent upon, uh, uh, Fran to bring this information to us. She's made the case for it. If, if that is the case, well, obviously this motion can't stand at that point. We, we'd have to do something else. So, uh, you know, if, uh, but it needs to be brought out and put down in black and white in front of us so we can have, you know, an informed discussion about it.
Um, Counselor Rec, what goal did you say that was in the compromise?
Seventeen.
Oh, seventeen.
Coastal shorelands goal.
And you, I, I, yeah, you're correct. So did we withdraw the?
No. No, but, uh.
However, I'm so happy you can, to investigate this and then if we are doing something we should be doing, it certainly changed things up and we did, uh, the city planner didn't create the resolution, but he did the research on what it was. Um, honestly, I don't know if he looked that hard and talked to him tomorrow, but he looked at that, but he only does. So, uh, but I can verify that, so can we pull off?
Can't somebody, can't somebody call up our comprehensive plan there? I'm not, I don't have my.
I'm looking at it right now, Counselor Rec.
It, it's, it should be one of the, um, uh, number three or number four probably, I don't know.
Under. Uh, under the coastal shorelines, I'm not seeing anything about providing more than if we take something, we have to provide more.
I'll have to look that up if you don't see that there, it should be part of, um, or, or just, I mean, it's taken directly from the state goals. You know.
Maybe somewhere else, no, but I'm just not seeing it under goals seven.
It would be sixteen, right?
Well, six, sixteen?
I don't think we have to do this, but I, I mean, uh.
No, we have to bring resources. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy to bring it back, I mean, you guys can, excuse me.
I think you move on.
The council can choose to.
No, set it to.
Seventeen, that's what I was looking, do you see it in there, Counselor?
Uh, I'm just looking at, I don't think it looks intense. I, I'd like to hold off on moving forward with it until we have verification.
Well, we voted on it, I mean, and, and, and verify it or don't. I mean, we voted on it, we don't have to revisit this. If it turns out upon reviewing this, Counselor, uh, this motion is invalid. Fran's right, this would be an improper motion. It would, it would probably just die on its own for being illegal or unconstitutional or, you know, violation of the, of the, of the.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I just did a Google search on, um, goal seventeen, you know, to and along. And Oregon statewide land use and goal seventeen covers coastal shorelands and among other things requires that cities and counties in coordination with OPRD have plans to provide public access to the beach. The goal also requires local governments to protect those access sites and replace them if they're lost for any reason.
Uh, I was just looking at our comprehensive plan, which goal seventeen does not include that.
Not the beach. Yeah, yeah, there's no beach there.
It's coastal shorelands, it doesn't have to be a beach.
Well, I just heard you say beach.
Sounds like there might be some debate about that, so, um, the motion and the approval can stand with this resolution. But we can come back at the next meeting with more information and you can always reverse it.
Hey, yeah.
Or if it's illegal, it, like Counselor Rec or Beasley said, it would just simply die. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will bring, I will work with Counselor Rec, find out what she's looking at and see if that is exactly. Maybe I don't have the permission in here and make sure that I'm looking at the same thing she is. But our comprehensive plan drives what we do, so. And if it's not in here, um, I'm just not sure if we can say the state supersedes our own comprehensive plan. We might have to amend our comprehensive plan if that's a goal of the council, but I would have to, I honestly don't have the answer to that question. So I would need to find out.
Would, have, have this come up in the next meeting then?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
I will provide you, um, all enough date and if we need to reverse anything, um, I will provide that as well.
Okay, moving on. So we now have, um, it looks on page sixteen, small city allotment grant and agreement. Has everybody, has everybody got a chance to read that? Considering how in our motions at this point?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
So I was just looking at the specifics of where the sidewalk will go. And it looks like it says approximately a hundred feet east of Highway one oh one, extending easterly approximately five hundred and fifty feet. So is that where Williams hits Bay Street?
No, it would go to like the stairwell that can really.
From there to where?
To the sidewalk by Fishmongers, she said.
Okay, so it'll connect to the existing sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's awesome.
Right along the new, that new fence, it would kind of integrate with the asphalt. And then if possibly there's restrooms in the city's parking lot, condo parking lot, it could have a little branch off and then continue to the stairway up and down.
That's fantastic. That would be a nice connectivity. Get people off of egg. That's really great news. I'm really happy we got the grant.
So is there a motion to accept this?
Madam President, I, uh, believe that we adopt these small city allotment grant.
Do you have a second? And, and could you bend that to grant approval for the mayor to sign it?
Sure.
Yeah, so, I'm in it.
Okay. So what, what, don't we do anything else? Okay, and so, uh, let's go ahead and.
Well, uh, both of them, yeah.
Yeah, we've discussed it, okay. So on the favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, motion carries. Okay. So now we're looking at on page thirty-seven, if you want to get to that. Have you guys had a chance to look at this? This is the public meetings compliance and review.
So remember, um, just to explain this one, sorry, I'm getting there. Just remember from last year, uh, we put together this resolution that council, um, authority signed off on. It said annually, we would review the, um, public meeting and records guidelines. And then it was signed off on exhibit B, which I didn't print a separate copy of exhibit B, but we can do that. It simply says that we understand that when you are at, it was put into place primarily for the fiftieth, but it was not a community act for any of this. Um, that council may meet as a quorum that says, yeah, we know the rules, we're not going to discuss business if we have a quorum. And, um, it talks about the city meetings and all of this, this stuff and that we're going to follow the rules. I know when you take the oath that it states that, but this is just further, it allows you to meet without having to notice everything. So it's just further confirmation that, um, you support the public meetings and you will be here for them.
Yes, this is, this is the annual thing.
Right, so that was the part of the resolution five thirty, I think I gave you guys a copy of it or I hope that didn't get missed.
Mm-hmm, I see.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so it would just be, this is just for time to do that and I can print out, uh, exhibit B or you can come in, it's not any time you like, so.
Okay. All right, so any comments on this?
There are motions.
There are motions? There are a motion.
Um, you know, I didn't put a motion in here.
No, you didn't.
Because you don't really need one, you just would, it's us discussing this and know that you come in and that you will sign it exhibit B after the meeting's arrived and make sure it's at the next meeting that you can sign it. Um, you know, I, I assume that everybody read this. I do want, I did find something today, I might send you guys, that was presented last year, or, excuse me, in twenty twenty-two. It talks about more detailed serial communication, I'm not sure it gives you anything more in here. It's just a different way of saying it, just to give you extra information on that.
Okay, so we'll just come in and sign it if we so deserve to do so. Okay, thank you. All right.
And just realize if you don't sign it, it's totally up to you. It's just, this, if you sign it, you're assuring your constituents that you plan to adhere to the rules. That's all it does. You don't have to sign it, but it just does that.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, so council committee assignments.
Everybody's signing.
So, and then Kim has given us information about what the assignments are. Do we want to change that or make that around? Or anybody, anybody have any comments on that, the suggestions?
Is everybody happy where they're at? Does anybody want to move from another committee? Does anybody want to give Mayor Short some breaks? Does Mayor Short want any breaks?
I could use a break today.
Well, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with where I am. Uh, there's, um, the, um, the council of governments and then I've been, um, pretty good at having monthly meetings with the Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinator. It's just a, a Zoom meeting. But they talk about, um, safety issues and what have you all over the county, it's, it's kind of fun here. So I can, I can stay on that one. Anybody else? Yes, Lindsay?
Um, I have some concern about my ability to stay on emergency preparedness because my new job is going to conflict with the timing of our meetings. So the meetings are right now, the, how was it?
Four thirty.
Yeah, four thirty on the second and fourth Mondays. Um, and I think the earliest I'll be able to make it here is going to be like five twenty and it's usually an hour long meeting. Um, so I would like to know if anybody else is interested in, in emergency preparedness. Um, we do have a meeting coming up on the eighth and I'm planning on going and talking to the committee. Um, if anybody else is interested in that, that committee.
I might be, but I can't kind of agree on it, but.
Your, your other option, if, if it turns out you can, is just to change it and just add another general member instead of a council member.
It's related to you.
That is an option.
Oh, did we actually have two council positions on that? By, by appointment of the city? I mean, not, not just, they were just, I thought you were just volunteers on the committee. I didn't know that these were council positions. What do you have? Uh, with order?
Nice. I'm pretty sure the, um, this was, this came on as I was coming on, I'm pretty sure the ordinance said, here we go. And that's for sharing that. Um, it says that, um, we, it is originally starting at three, but obvi, we know we increased it to five. Um, of those are members appointed, two shall be members of the city council and shall be residents of the city people back. So, but we, so if you decided that, no, none of the city council members wanted to do it, we can just do another ordinance and then, and just change it to, um, four.
Resident community.
Sorry.
Uh, can we make that, council, an agenda item to discuss this or did, you know, if you guys want to discuss it tonight, I'd be glad to. But, uh, I think that this is worthy of discussion. Uh, I had a meeting with, uh, Joyce and Karen Enriquek, who's a city recorder, uh, on December eleventh or twelve.
Something, yeah.
And, uh.
It was, it was right before our statement.
And I think that, I have to tell you that, uh, all this committee would be willing to step up to our emergency planning, our emergency preparation committee than would be willing to step up to the planning commission or the city council. Uh, because there's this core of people out there that are cert qualified. And, uh, I'd like to see us, uh, maybe adjust the, uh, the requirements. First of all, I, I would really like to get our city council out of committees and, uh, and, uh, and recruit cert qualified people for this, uh, emergency committee. Uh, and I think we can do that, I think if we put an ad out, we can do it because there, there are just, there's tons of cert people out there that I think would be, that, that can do a great job for us. But I would like to, if I, the reason, uh, the reasons for that, I think, you know, I don't want to sit here and make this a lengthy meeting. But I think we should, you know, really discuss this so that everybody has a chance to bring a party that's formed, uh, on this thing. I think we have, you know, this is an ethical issue, an organizational issue and an experience issue, I think. Uh, because it's the most important committee.
Well, this, uh, committee has evident, ever since it's been in existence and it's first started out, as I've explained before, with Jimmy Damaris coming and talking to the city council. And so the, Lindsay, I think you said, oh, that sounds like something we could, we should look into. And I think I jumped on and then the mayor thought, you should be involved. So that was the only way that we could get it started at that point was to have city council people interested in it. Then we gained three other people that have different types of experience that are not on the city council. So, um, I, you know, that's how it started, doesn't mean that it has to stay that way. But that's just how, the reason that it started and the way that it did. So we can certainly have a agenda item and talk about it further.
Or add work session.
Yeah. If, if the council, so which is.
That's what we're talking about next, right?
Work sessions. Okay.
Yeah, I'm in that same thought as what Rick's saying. I think all the city council members should be cert, certi, cert, certified and per state certified and all that. I think that's something we should all be working toward.
I agree. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, um, let's see.
City staff reports? Uh, work sessions.
Work session, I'm sorry. Work session, oh. Yes, Kathy, would you like to discuss work session, would you have a mind? Mayor Short?
Thank you. I, I'm coming. I'm coming. Sorry, I'm not asleep, but I am not feeling well. Um, I just wanted to, um, get the council's opinion. I would like to start work, work sessions, uh, once a month, um, so, so that we could go over some of these issues before they come up. And, um, and so I was, uh, hoping to propose that on our second, um, council meeting of the month, we would start with a work session every month so that we have time to talk over these issues and brainstorm and get ideas going and generated and then, uh, bring it to a regular council. And then, uh, bring it to a regular council decision, for decisions. So I was just hoping to get your opinions on that.
Would this be part of the regular meeting or occurred?
No. No, it is not part of the regular meeting. It would be, uh, agendas would be established and, um, definite goals, uh, to be accomplished in a work session. Uh, we need to go over our goals for the year. And so that would be my suggestion for the, our first work session, is to, uh, go over the, our five-year goal plans and how we're progressing and what needs to be done for the year. And then, uh, then we have things to work on for the year.
I like that.
I like that. Um, Mayor Short, or how long are you thinking, are you thinking an hour or?
Yeah, one hour, one hour. I would say one hour. You know, start at five and over by six by regular council session. And, um, and ideas to come to the recorder as to what you would like to cover, um, as far as agenda items.
Because we also have one, um, that council wrecking council that you feel are aware of about the Deepaway Creek and the source water protection. I meant to ask you guys about it in December, and I swear this time I wasn't gonna forget again because they're eager, and the last thing we had discussed when they came and talked about the watershed was to have a work session. Um, in addition, I also want to have a work session, uh, about, I wanted to finish, to do more about the review. I've mentioned that a couple of times. So I thought I'd like to do that as well, and I'd like to do that one in January.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know how much you want to cover in January. Um.
Sounds like three. So agenda items on, on a work session.
That's too many.
How big is the next meeting looking?
I don't mean to take that hard. Well, I just, I just, I.
I can have some things spoken on council.
I feel like if we could keep all of the meetings below three hours, that we're more productive.
Yes, um, a- absolutely. Let me see, I don't have a lot for right now, but it changes. I do think we might have a person come in and asking for something with the community hall. Two people actually coming to talk about, making projection for community hall, um.
I'm, I'm in favor of having a work session on a regular basis before our second meeting. Like unless it looks like that meeting's gonna be really heavy, and then maybe we can schedule for a different date that same month.
Okay.
I would agree. I think we get a lot done in a work session.
So are you thinking, so the strategic goals? Strategic planning, strategic planning. And watershed, the.
Drinking water protection.
Drinking water protection.
Yep.
Um. Me. I'll come up with a political way to say that.
New, new revenue.
Okay, so that's another idea. Um, and then we talked about the emergency preparedness committee. So this is just a start, but, um, I already know councillor, someone councillor's. Because I have.
I think, and revenue meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Not just new revenue.
Yeah.
Would that be maybe up February, you're talking with that group, or you think it needs to be January topic?
Well, it should be before we start finding out the budget.
Well, I have the tentative on the project updates, I gave you guys the tentative, the draft calendar. So, um, we would still be okay doing that discussion in February. Um, I do need to look at the ballot rules and find out when we, because if you want to initiate a new tax, you just put it actually on the ballot and there's timelines for that.
Oh, yeah.
Certain new taxes, not all of them, but certain new taxes. So I do need to look at that. Um, if February is too late for that, I will let you know. And would that be okay?
Oh, yeah, and if there are like five items on the agenda, I propose that we have it like on the twenty-third or something where we're not backed up by a one-hour time frame.
It would depend on how much the council wants to accomplish in a work session. And would you, how, how fast do you want to accomplish this?
I think we'd be pushing it with three items on the agenda in an hour.
In an hour, yes.
So if we're gonna say five items that you have on the list right now, I think it should be a separate date.
Doc leases, that was another important one.
Like the twenty-third this month, just to get through a bigger agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And then starting next month, just having a regular work session scheduled on that second.
Yeah.
It, uh, my concern was you've got three items on a, on a work session. Can we do that?
It sounds like there are more than three.
You can have as many as you want on a work session, as long as there are agendas.
Okay.
How many are we looking for this first one?
Well, um, strategic plan, drinking, uh, water protection, me, doc leases, revenue, and emergency preparedness committee.
Do we need to have work, I think that, I mean, this is up to Joyce and the committee, but I think emergency preparedness does not have to be January.
No.
So that, so five, that's how I, yeah.
I think if anything else that, it's only those that I'm thinking of that are pretty, that have been pretty important.
Well, and I think of this watershed protection, uh, deal. I mean, we had a watershed protection meeting that took an hour of presentations, left no time for questions. It's, it's an important and a big topic. And I just don't see how you, how, what are you, you'd even have a work? Why would you have a work session unless you can, you know, devote the time you need, uh, for these items? Revenues, uh, that's an hour-long meeting.
I think this meeting would be two hours.
Yeah, I do too. I do too, and that's why I think maybe we should look at the twenty-third of January for this first work session to get through hopefully all five of these big-ticket items.
What about work sessions before every meeting?
Well, to get it done this month, I think we would have to schedule it separate from a council meeting. But I do like the idea of work sessions every month at the beginning of our second meeting. Yeah, I just think that this first one is gonna be a big agenda, so maybe i- if we can have two hours, I think the twenty-third is a, is a date.
I'm, I'm just asking you though, should we do it twice a month?
I don't know.
Let's see how much we can get through with the first, bigger one. We play it back here, you know?
I know that, uh, Newport City Council, uh, has very extensive work sessions. And, uh, you know, it's tough, um, it's tough on us, there's.
Is there anything else scheduled on the twenty-third?
No, that's why I put that in line, okay, because I didn't want to do three council meetings in a row, no offense.
There's a lot of work to get ready for.
Yeah.
So the twenty-third would be fine.
Would that be okay for work sessions?
For me, yes, absolutely.
What, what time, and if it's gonna be two hours, is that like five to seven?
Um, yeah, um, that, what everybody's scheduling this.
Okay.
Tuesdays seem to be better for everybody, um, but, so you're thinking five to seven?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Five to seven on the twenty-third with five agenda items?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. And then planning on as we move forward to have at least one work session on that second.
No, you're saying we're gonna have a work session five to seven P.M. And then followed by a regular setting?
Nope, that's just the work session.
Okay.
And, and you may not make a decision or may not have a path forward. Your path forward is that someone maybe, well, we need more investigation and talk about it in the next one. So we're not saying you have the resolve, everything, you just, it's a way to discuss it. And there's probably things you're gonna ask, and I'm like. I would really appreciate it having a regular one.
Yeah, I think.
It makes it easier for me to, um, the work sessions gives me an opportunity to give you guys more detail about that.
So on the sixteenth, are we doing this?
Twenty-third.
Okay, twenty-third, I got that, but I thought we, the mayor wanted to meet before the regular.
I think Mayor Short's okay if we do a work session on the twenty-third instead of meeting before the sixteen.
Yes, that's fine.
And I would need to ask Mayor Short that, other than strategic plan, which he has on.
Okay. Are we ready to do the next one? Okay, um, city staff reports. Karen, had you came over the way before, could you, or Bradie, you like to, um, jump in and discuss some?
No, I, I think, is there any questions? I mean, I, I tried to give you a lot of detail about what's going on in the city and some specific issues, um, and I don't know if there's any questions and, you know, just.
Well, I have questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on the rebranding?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you, why do we need a new logo?
We don't, except that I kind of, I love our logo, but I was hoping for us to get a little bit more updated to match the other cities as far as, and the way we look, represent ourselves.
Well, I think that's a good idea, but I think we also have a, I would make an argument that we have a very nice logo.
I, I don't.
Recognizable, we, you know, the whole point of having a logo is that over years, people will recognize them. And so we've invested all this time in, into this logo. I just worry about going out and doing a new thing. It, uh, it's almost a diversion. So, uh, that, I also had a question on the financial, or comment on the financial. Uh, have we received our software or? A financial?
I'm needing the staff, the, uh, staff and I are meeting on Friday to review the checklist one more time because staff asked us to look at it because we had some changes. And then once they get the checklist, they'll be able to schedule us the date for that.
I think just.
I should have put that in there, I apologize, I missed putting that in there.
Uh, yeah, I just think it's so important that we, because we were just, you know, we're lacking, uh, the report capacity. We need all these decisions, all this money. So, uh, and I see that you're moving forward on the auditors, but, uh, when you say that, uh, things are put in this array and, and, uh, you're fixing the paperwork, can we, is there someone who can see this? I mean, you know, what does this look like? You have a box of stuff?
Five or six boxes for each of the audits.
Okay.
By them going through it and by people looking things up or put back at the organization that they were.
Right.
So if we hand these to a new auditor, they're gonna be a mess, and they're not just spending all their, their first part of their money straightening things out. But we know, I know, having worked with several audits, what they're looking for and where they're looking for. So they weren't putting any digital away, so that's what we do. Uh, I just, people working through them, they're just, you know, we have a lot of people in their files, let me just say that. I mean, a lot of people in their files.
Right. Uh, Karen, on the harbor, uh, staff submitted a request for an extension on the project for one of the grant funding streams. Uh, is that, do, is that funding stream in trouble or are we worried about that?
No, in fact, I heard the, from the analysts today, um, they actually, I'd originally put in there to just extend through the end of March. Um, the reason they're asking us for this information is because they, if we don't think we're gonna spend it, they want to reappropriate it. And I'm like, no, we're spending it, just a little later. But part of the thing is, is that they're saying, the issue is they, they say their project had to be completed by June of twenty twenty-four. The project completed by June of twenty twenty-four. And if it wasn't gonna complete, then it had to be done by December of twenty twenty-four. I'm like, no, no. So they actually reached out to me this afternoon and said that they're looking at sending us to June, to twenty twenty-five. Which is yay, so I don't think we're gonna have a problem getting it. It's just, it was, I, I had to go and seek, let's say, it just worked to get that extension. And it just, it's the, um, million-dollar grant that protected that, we're, we're fine with the others.
Underwater, uh, potable culinary wells project, I think this really, uh, folds right into emergency preparation. We're talking about the, the wells that are out by the Waco, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do, now, do we have pumps on those wells? Yeah.
They're all ready.
And do, do we have, my question was, do we have an emergency generator to operate those if we go down?
Um, they're, um, they could, yeah, we do. We have one that could go over there. In, in this budget, I'd like to get a dedicated, um, generator for those, those wells. But right now, we do have a multi-use generator.
Well, I think that's a huge thing in our, uh, emergency operations plan. It really fills in the gap here. And I know that council, the councils have reported that they are interested in the infrastructure issue.
Mm-hmm.
And that council, uh, fills a gap. Um, is the, on the one point two million gallon tank, how long does it take to fill that tank and is it filled?
Um, it, it, well, we could produce about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons. But we could speed that up to, you know, five hundred gallons, I mean, if we want to. But normally, we make about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day.
Okay.
Along with, uh, for storage, along with what the customer needs for this.
Is it filled now?
Yeah, yeah.
We keep it.
It doesn't.
Well, pretty much all the time, along the south bank. So there's one point two million north, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons south.
On wastewater?
And then we're gonna get another five hundred thousand on the, the hills.
On wastewater, are we gonna need, is this a, a new wastewater operating position we need?
Oh, no. Well, it's been the same, now we don't have to go for those.
We may use it, yeah.
Remember, we were gonna have that whole discussion?
I negotiated with DQ and.
He talked to the right person, he said, no.
They kept our plan at level two, which saves quite a bit. Because we, we won't have to have a operator three, which is.
Even though, um, our public works supervisor got a certificate, he got level three. Awesome.
He's three mark, but Paul's gonna put his three in wastewater.
He's still gonna go after three wastewater.
Next week, he's gonna go take the exam for three.
That's good. Seven three.
I have a question, Joyce. Um. Um, just to verify on the harbor restoration project, it looks like we're scheduling a meeting for the tenth at five?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I should have just brought that up separately, if we can, um, because the, the, it's closing on the ninth and, yeah, they want to go, who, 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 we get us.
Speed it through, yeah.
Yeah, so. So if you guys, if, if the council convenes as a special meeting on the tenth, if we, it'd be a short five o'clock, five o'clock, if that works, or five thirty? And it would just be a short, take a P and E's recommendation. Five, five, okay, yeah.
We have to expedite everything at this point, so.
Okay.
Yeah, any other comments? It looks like you're keeping the city engineer busy.
He's wonderful, you know, he is really wonderful. He's, uh, yeah. We just said, we just throw him to the wolves.
Yeah, and so there's a, there are a lot of issues with the hills project and, uh, we have all the homes up on top. And how is the city really gonna handle that with our crew? And it's like we're gonna have a lot of responsibility to do there, and Joyce.
How many homes are, how they built?
Oh, just prob- probably only, there's gonna be twelve homes there now.
Just at the beginning?
Yeah, but they're proposing one of like two hundred, and you're based one on the hills on top. So, but, that's not, they're not going up like they thought they were.
Well, COVID happened, isn't it?
Oh, no, we, we lowered the, uh, the number of vacation rooms, you could put in, that's the reason.
That's what we're.
We did get an update today, remember we had said, I think I, I said here, but there was some issue with their water, um, with OHA and all that. We did get, so their pump stage, pump and reservoir are.
Yeah.
Basically, their certified grid can start putting in, in, uh, water meters, and if we want that, they learned about that. But that came out of the meeting, those pressure companies, we don't, we're not putting heaters in, you have it on this.
Pump stage.
Yeah, so, so now we can, now we can take care of that. Um, so, so I was just gonna take up the.
So do they do their own DQ on that then too, tradition?
Yeah, so all the manholes and the, a lot of pressures to are on the top.
Mm-hmm.
Um, due to the depth of the gravity, so a lot of it is pressure sewer. But they're, they're going to maintain all that.
Well, that's, that's what I want to mention, because they talked about maintenance agreements. And we do not want to, as the city, to take over the maintenance of that area.
Yeah.
So, and we're talking about that with related to distal water detention retention laws and things like that. So one of the things that'll probably end up, well, will end up coming to you after we've hacked at them, Freddy's hacked at them, and our lawyers hacked at them, is any proposed maintenance agreements that for them to maintain, is there a, a choice to maintain? Because we just don't want to do it, we don't want to take a lot of it, you know?
Yeah, it's too complicated.
It's gonna be a pretty big system.
I have another great question.
Great.
You got it?
Sure.
Uh, boy, oh, boy, there's a lot of silt above the, damn, you know, isn't there?
Yeah, from the rain round, yeah, a lot of the, so Center Creek is, is a very, uh, silt-driven creek anyway. It's all full of, uh, like fine sand, and a lot of that is sand in there. So what happens when you get heavy rainfall, hydraulic pressure of that all pushes towards just about what they have removed is probably back there, from upstream.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's always been a problem when it's silt to the bay, is it, it, it all comes from Center Creek.
Do we have a plan for this?
Um, the court will be here, um, between twenty-five or. The Corps will be here between 25 and, so that's every five years. It's the fifth year. We'll be hearing from them. They did, yeah, Corps. So, yeah, we just gotta keep in touch with the Corps. And if the, we have a lobbyist too. If I can pronounce his name, that gives us all the information from the Corps right here.
Oh.
Boo Hager.
Boo Burt.
Boo Hager. Yeah, Boo Hager. He's a lobbyist for Oregon that helps all the basin holders. A lot of dredging questions are coming up right now, or all these areas. Columbia River is usually the main, and then Cus Bay, so it starts Columbia River, Cus Bay, Newport, or Newport. And then Portland, things like that. But then we're always the secondary, third parties that get the monies given out. But, yeah, we keep in contact with Mr. Spears from the Corps of Engineers and keep them sort of, keep a base on their radar.
Good. All right. Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Any public comments?
Not a lot. I don't care.
Okay. Any public comments on the telephone or Zoom?
Zoom.
Okay. Um, council comments. Lindsay, would you like to start?
Sure. I would like, in anticipation of our budget process starting, I would like to get a estimate on how much the, the mobile signs that will blink at you telling you your speed. Yeah, I would like to know about how much that'll cost before we start our budgeting process.
Didn't we have all those?
Yeah, we're looking into those pedestrian flashing crossings and then also those, those signs.
Yeah, this is a speed trail, this is a-
The speed signs are less expensive than I thought.
What happened? They, is that a loan or something?
Speed trailers, they just saw their life. They were the older style that had the flashing pieces of number and they just, they're not digital. So we, yeah, they, we just ended up rusting away on the coast.
So all of those options, I think are interesting. I'd love to see just like pricing on those and see how we can move forward before it's a budget and we start.
Do you do that?
Very feasible, more so than they were, say, five to 10 years ago.
Would you be in favor of looking at like a, a mobile radar speed ticket issuing kind of a setup? Is that something we could?
I'm really interested. I mean, I think that the pedestrian crossings are very dangerous. If there's something that we can do like blinky lights, I think that's a priority for the pedestrians. Other than that, I, I think that just letting people know their speed with the automatic is like a good step. I, I would be in favor of going straight to auto enforcing running tickets. But I do, I do, I saw a lot of them over the winter break in different towns. It's just,
Yeah.
it shows that your, your speed and then it gives you the blinky blue and red.
Or a yellow, so you have to say attention.
Yeah.
They make me slow. If I'm the one, they make, even if I'm not, I still wanna go.
Yeah. I'm just curious how much it costs. That's-
Well, that makes me think of something else that I would like to see on that list of work sessions and that's at the municipal corps.
Yeah. I don't have any. Okay. I have one, I guess, a comment for Brady. I know that we've talked about sirens and how they haven't worked and they're expensive and what have you. But looking at the recent highways in California, I noticed that a lot of those towns in the videos that you see of this had pretty good sirens. So I'm just wondering if maybe we could do some research and find out.
So California put a lot of money into notification for fire, sirens for fire, law fires, a lot of them, it's tornadoes and wind. Yeah, it's just, it, it, it costs a lot of money to redo the sirens system we have. It would all have to be very functional. But the more cities are on the coast are transitioning to the Everbridge and or providing the emergency radius. Because the way our sirens work right now is there has to be an event. There's nothing, like no one doesn't set those off. The county doesn't wanna set them off. It's actually a person, a staff member that has to either feel an earthquake, go to either city hall to set it off or function a radio and manually set it off. And right now, it's either the mayor or myself. So it's, it's, the ones in Hawaii, the county and NOAA activate their, their system.
That's interesting, because you could buy a thousand radios distributed to three in every home, town.
Everbridge, I have, Everbridge is, got a agreement with the county, which I found out like on-
Yeah.
Everbridge is like a vacation, you want a vacation system. And I, I reached out to get, to get, to see what the Everbridge system is about, because I hear everybody talking about it up and down the coast. We want, we do rather than Everbridge, Everbridge. Then I found out the county was involved. So Sam, me and Everbridge are going to meet to talk about
Great.
that, and we'll get a nice discount on price because it's the county.
And that's notification through your cell phone?
And it's, one of the things that happen is you don't even have to live here. You will get a notification.
If you're in this area.
If you're in the area, if you, if there's a warning put out on Everbridge, everybody that lives here, that lives here, stays here, visits here, will get the notification. Better than a sign.
Does it override your, your like your phone silence or, I mean?
From what I understand, it's from God that got there recently, but it just-
You'd have to literally turn it to off. But yeah, if your phone's off, it's still goes off. Because some things have a setting in there that you can-
And I will verify with them when I meet with them. That's what it does. But I did express some concerns about making sure our tourists and people get, and they're like, it won't matter. They will get the notification. Okay.
Problem solved. And then there's radios too.
And a lot cheaper than 16 or reposting.
Folks provide these radios. You just plug it in and if there's a tsunami, warning, alert, if there's a windstorm, anything, it'll go off.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of simple though, to get all the messages.
You can have a couple of them, one in your house, one in your shop, or where.
Boy, if work sessions go like this, we'll be in there.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. It just had a thought. I just wonder, have we priced removing those, the, the units?
No, but we do have our own lift now. So it will really, it goes that high. So-
You can do in a house?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great.
Maybe not the pole. So we get, we may have to have help with getting the poles down if we do that, but that's still pretty, PD may help us with that.
I have two quick things. Cook Avenue. And I drove by today and the letters are going out this week that says they have to move. And she has actually gotten worse on her side.
I know.
It's like there's turk out. I go through at all times. It's probably you, the S U D, that she complains about.
It actually isn't.
It's made, but it's you.
Yeah.
But yes, I, the thing is, is I do, we talked about this, my people say send the letters out, that may first step. They are working, but they're not gonna be able to get anything done to create them driveway. So they'll have to do it. But I, with that also, I'm a blind ring.
And then my other thing is I want more law enforcement coverage, not less. So I wanna make sure that when we're, that, you know, training, you know, that that's not taking him away from.
Yes, physically.
So.
I set up a meeting to talk to Carl about this, because I've been concerned about it for the last few months, because he, I'm trying not to be anal about it, but we are paying them to be in the city.
Thank you.
And when I don't see them on the seat wall and everybody who's down in the port doing meetings, he's not here. I mean, he's not here.
I mean, I'm okay if, A, they don't charge us or we're even giving them that.
And that's the thing. If they took him away for a month.
What's the contract say?
Right. Yeah. They took him away, and that's what I'm gonna talk to Carl about. I want, and I wanna talk to him because it said, we need to talk about the contract, because if we're paying,
It's a lot of money we're paying, yeah.
And when he said he was in the city, he wasn't. For that time that that guy was here, he had to be out of the city, because we don't have all the exciting calls to the U.
Yeah.
So he told me that. He's told me this. And I'm-
I've definitely seen him a lot of us lately.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we did have holidays and he said he was sick and all that, but thank you.
You saw the report on Sunday on the port for December.
Yeah.
And I've been watching it for the last two months, watching and looking at this time. And driving to the city and not seeing him.
We were working on getting that fire lane on Bay Street painted, weather permitting, but we got signage to put up where that entire length is fire.
I think, I think he met somebody over there yesterday. I think when I was coming, I was, it's the second day, I was coming back from feeding my dogs. There was this famous TV that does this all the time, that uses that as, she gets out of car, runs over to something, gets back in the vehicle. And he was behind her and his lights were flashing. And I'm gonna ask him about that, what happened with that, because it's the same person that does it all the time. And I asked him to watch that. I said, they need to not do that. They're not supposed to do that. It says right there, don't do it.
Yeah, it says fire lane. But there's, this was really dangerous. Sunday was really bad here. Yeah, we had that weather watching folks and the news was here, the channel two was here.
On the first, there must have been 100 people.
Yeah, she said there was a car, there was a long line of people walking down to the city. That's what that was. It's like first to pick it, you know. But that's what it was. It was that first thing, like about 105 people, I think they said, way more than they expected.
We had channel two and 12 on Seawall for the weather watching. Yeah.
Okay, councillor Beasley, do you have any comments?
Oh, thank you for letting me part, you part of the discussion.
Okay. Councillor Rick?
Nothing for that.
I'm sorry? No, no comments?
I think that was a no problem.
Okay, Mayor Short?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Joyce. I appreciate your pitching for me today. Thank you. Thank you, councillors.
Okay.
Hope you feel better.
I hope you feel better. Yeah. Well, it was a good meeting. I appreciate everybody's attention. Thank you. And we need a good job.